Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the opening prayer and memorials. Is there any memorials for this evening? Seeing none. Trustee Garen, did you want to introduce?
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we're going to have our two student trustees lead us in prayer. They're splitting it between the two of them. So Rebecca, if you'd like to go first.
October is considered a spiritual month because it marks a significant change in seasons and symbolizes transformation, gratitude, and reflection. October is also a month where we honor Mary, the mother of Jesus. Please join me in the sign of our faith. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Loving God, as we gather here today in service of the students, families, and staff entrusted to our care, may we turn to Mary, the mother of your son, and our mother too. Mary, you listened with faith, trusted in God's plan, and walked with courage even in times of uncertainty. Help us to follow your example of openness, patience, and compassion. Guide our discussions with decisions that they may reflect wisdom, justice, and care for all. Bless our work that it may serve the dignity and growth of every child. Mary, mother of the church, pray for us.
Now please join me in reciting Hail Mary three times. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and in our death. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and in the hour of our death. Amen. Holy, hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and in the hour of our death. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thanks very much, Jason and Rebecca. Moving now to the territorial acknowledgement. I would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally cared for by the Hodenashoni, Anishnabe, and Nutra people. I also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge, laws, and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. Moving now to 1.3, approval of the agenda. Can I get a mover of the agenda? Trustee Sakura? Trustee Wyler? Do we have consensus? Thank you very much. Moving to declaration of pecuniary interest. Is there any from this meeting or a previous public or in-camera meeting? Seeing none. Moving to 3.1. Approval of minutes of regular and special meetings. Can I get a mover of the minutes? Approval of the committee of the whole minutes for September 8th? Trustee Garen and trustee Stanley? Do we have consensus? Thank you very much. We'll move now into item 4.4, which is the delegations. So when your name is called, please come up. Just a few housekeeping items. The presentations are limited to 10 minutes. I will set the timer for that, and the timer will beep once when you have one minute left. Okay? I will call Christine Barbeau.
Okay. Good evening, Chairs, trustee, Director of Education, and members of the Waterloo Catholic District School Board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here because the decision to relocate French immersion from Holy Rosary to St. Nicholas is not a minor operational adjustment, something to be labeled as for information purposes. It is a boundary change. And under your own procedures and under Ontario's Education Act, it should have triggered a formal, transparent process with public consultation and a trustee decision in open session. This is about more than French immersion. It's about how decisions are made in our board: transparency, accountability, and public trust. Ontario's Education Act requires boards to govern in ways that promote student achievement and well-being, ensure effective stewardship, and maintain public confidence. These are not abstract ideals; they are statutory duties. Your administrative procedures, APF 017, which cover the boundary review process within the Waterloo Catholic District School Board, states that a boundary review is required when the board proposes to relocate students or grades such that the number is less than 50% of a school's enrollment. A structured, public process with data options and trustee debate is required before implementation. Our neighboring school board, the Waterloo Region District School Board, has triggers for a boundary review that include new schools, shifting demographics, capital plans, or changes to grades or programs. As such, French immersion changes are handled through board-level reviews, reports, and public consultation. This relocation changes where French immersion students attend, alter feeder patterns, and impacts transportation, and affects hundreds of families. That's a boundary change. Other boards treat French immersion programs concerns alongside boundary reviews. Beginning in 2024, 2025, the Upper Grand District School Board trustees directed staff to conduct a French immersion program review alongside a boundary change. The goal was to help balance enrollment across schools. Halton District School Board in 2024 used a formal boundary review with a steering committee and public updates for the Aldershot French immersion pathways. And Halton Catholic District School Board in 2021 undertook a board-approved boundary review to accommodate French immersion expansion in Milton. If other boards can uphold these standards, why can't we? Where is the data? Neither the public nor reportedly even our trustees have seen the enrollment projections, program viability analysis, or long-term accommodation impacts that underpin the proposed changes. This lack of transparency is unacceptable for a decision of such magnitude. To access basic planning documents, I had to file a Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act request. The public should not need to invoke Freedom of Information legislation to understand the rationale behind a board change. If the stated justification is to relieve enrollment pressure at Holy Rosary, then the numbers matter. How many French immersion students currently live in Holy Rosary's English track boundary versus outside of it? We were told it's roughly a 50-50 split. What are the actual counts? If families within the English border opt to remain at Holy Rosary by leaving French immersion, the logic of relocating the program collapses. The long-term accommodation plans claim that French immersion attendance is predominantly drawn from within host schools' English track boundary. If Holy Rosary is an exception, the data must be shown. Publish actual enrollment numbers, alternatives considered, and consultation records. Without this information, the community is left to wonder. Was this decision truly data-driven? Or is French immersion being used as a scapegoat for poor planning? Are there other motives behind this move that have not been disclosed? This lack of transparency fuels distrust. If the rationale is sound, share the evidence. Openness would eliminate speculation and restore confidence in the board's decision-making. The plan to relocate French immersion program to St. Nicholas has raised serious concerns about the future of the program at Sir Edgar Bauer. Families are asking, what would this move mean for the viability of French immersion at Sir Edgar Bauer? Is this ultimately a step towards dismantling the French immersion program? Staff have indicated that St. Nicholas may not be the permanent home for French immersion, and that enrollment will be monitored. This suggests that the families uprooted now could face another relocation in the near future. Meanwhile, uncertainty around enrollment impacts from new high-rise developments along Urb Street add further complexity to long-term planning. These unknowns make transparency and accountability essential. As someone who teaches hundreds of students each year about best practices and consultation for development projects, I can say with confidence, the board has not engaged in meaningful consultation. Meaningful consultation is not a checkbox exercise. It is not a survey issued after the decisions are made, a single drop-in meeting, a website lacking any data on the decisions that have been made, or a formality, something placed on the agenda for information purposes. Meaningful consultation is a principled proactive approach to engaging the public and stakeholders. It requires early involvement before decisions are finalized, transparency, sharing the problem definition and the range of options, and openness to influence, genuinely considering input in shaping outcomes. There is a rich body of case law and policy guidance that supports the value of early, good-faith, two-way engagement in decision-making processes. This isn't a legal standard. It's a cornerstone of democratic governance and ethical planning. This is the standard that the board should be striving for: genuine, meaningful consultation. I served on the 2020-21 French immersion review committee, a process that exemplified good governance and meaningful consultation. It had open dialogue, evidence-based decision-making, and respect for community voices. The review established guiding principles for the board to follow. Our committee's recommendations were clear. To alleviate location pressures on existing sites, adjustments to boundaries should be made to address both current and projected demands on facilities. This recommendation was echoed in the 2017-2018 French immersion program review, which advised that to address enrollment pressures, solutions such as portables and boundary changes should be considered before any other accommodation measure. The relocation ignores the recommendations and violates the site selection criteria that originally led to Holy Rosary being chosen as a French immersion site. Relocating French immersion students from a walkable school community to a site requiring daily car commutes undermines the board's stated goal to promote active transportation and reduce reliance on vehicles. The relocation disregards the board's stated focus on long-term sustainability in areas such as energy use, transportation, and community engagement. It shifts students away from a walkable neighborhood, increasing environmental and equity burdens. Your own guiding principles outlined in APF 017 commit to creating boundaries that maximize walkability, ensuring the efficient use of resources, and providing long-term accommodation solutions. These principles are meant to be applied transparently, tested with data and public input, not behind closed doors. When decisions are made without sharing the underlying analysis or engaging meaningfully with affected communities, it undermines the very spirit of these procedures. Under the Education Act, boards have clear responsibilities. Section 171, paragraph 7, a board is responsible in determining the attendance area for each school. In plain terms, school boundaries are board decision, and the board includes our trustees. Section 169 of the Student Achievement and School Board Governance Act of 2009 sets the board's duties as promoting student achievement and well-being, ensuring effective stewardship, and developing and maintaining policies that encourage public confidence. Trustees' duties include consulting with parents and supporters on the board's plans and bringing community concerns forward. Trustees cannot meet those obligations without full information and an open opportunity to debate and to decide. This relocation was not brought as a board motion. Trustees were not provided the data or the space to debate, and the public was not meaningfully consulted before a decision was made. This is a governance failure. Tonight, I ask for our elected trustees to demand the following. Acknowledge that this relocation constitutes a boundary change under APF 017. Pause implementation and immediately initiate a formal boundary review under APF 017, and publish key data on enrollment projections, feeder patterns, site capacity analysis, program viability analysis, boundary maps, and any consultation records. And affirm your commitment to the principles of transparency, equity, and good governance that underpins public education. Because if we allow these decisions of this scale to happen without transparency, without consultation, and without trustee debate, we are heading down a very dark path for governance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to questions. Trustees are reminded that these are clarifying questions based on the material that was presented. Thank you. Trustee Cuff.
Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned a 2020-2021 French immersion review committee, as well as a 2017-2018 French immersion program review. What created these committees?
I don't know why the committees were created at that point. I was part of the 2020-2021 committee, but I'm not sure of the reasoning behind their implementation. That would be a board decision.
Trustee Stanley.
I had a very similar question. We're trying to dig into what that committee was and what happened to it, and where it is right now, in particular, when we need it. But I think we'll just have to leave that to see if anyone else wants to answer that from the staff. I guess the second question I would just ask, it's more personal interest, but I think it's really important. I noticed in your original email to us, you're a professor at Waterloo in ERS. I took my bachelor and master's in ERS back when it was called Environment Resource Studies. I think it's sustainability now. You mentioned in your delegation that there's an environmental consequence or cost to, potentially, to this boundary change. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what the impacts might be regarding walkability and so forth?
Yes. No, thank you. And proud alumni as well for my master's there. I think it's an underestimated consequence that we are not necessarily bringing to the forefront. Sustainability is something we should all be striving for and something we need to be thinking about in everything that we do. And this plan directly removes students that are in a walkable, rich community, and is forcing parents to draw and is forcing parents to drive at least 10 minutes multiple times a day, not to mention, once students get into extracurriculars, we're back and forth. If students are split between the two schools, the sustainability consequences are immense. And not to diminish the link between sustainability, climate change, well-being, and there's a strong link between the emotional connection with environment and students. And so, carbon emissions, energy uses, reliability on personal transportation, it's a significant impact and one to be considered, especially looking at the outward-facing, you know, sustainability plan that the board has.
Thank you very much for sharing your expertise on this.
I go with trustee Phillips.
You mentioned here that there was a French Immersion Review Committee. Sorry. According to our website, there's supposed to be a committee that exists. That's what I understood. Did you have, my question is, did you have an opportunity to join the French immersion program? Did you have an opportunity or are you part of the French immersion committee that they currently have right now? And so that you were able to provide input on this?
Yeah. No, I'm not part of the committee right now. I'm not necessarily aware of what the membership is or what it entails to actually join such a committee. My role in that committee was as a French parent, French immersion parent, and then it was, once the final report was submitted, then the membership ended at that point. Yes.
So just to clarify, there is no committee that you were?
Not that I'm aware of, because I would have, I probably could have missed an email, but I would have been interested in joining that committee and continuing my membership.
Okay, so I'm just gonna pass this off to our director through the chair. Are you able to, Director Anna Lisa, if you're able to provide the information to the committee that's currently available, that's advertised on our website, and the members within, that'd be wonderful, just to give parents an opportunity to join it, for parents such as her who want to join something like that. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Wyler.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to call out two questions from your presentation that I think you're still looking for information on, so I just wanted to call them out as part of clarification. I heard that you're still looking for how many students are within and outside the boundary. Is that correct?
That is correct. I reached out to the principal and she said she's not able to provide that information, so I had to put the Freedom of Information request in to gain that, because last time we were told it was a 50-50 split, which...
And you wanted some...
Yeah, it's not on...
More specific numbers.
Exactly. It's not on the website either, so...
Yep. And the other question I think you had was questions around receiving certain parts of information, or I think you used the word "the underlying analysis." Can you help me understand what additional analysis or information you would be looking for? And the reason I'm asking, as a part of being a delegation, we take away the questions that are asked in your presentation and with the staff of the board, then we respond to those. So I just want to help you call those out in the meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you for that opportunity. We would like enrollment projections, the actual numbers on those who are inside and outside the English boundary, alternatives that are actually considered in the data that supports them not being an option, feeder patterns, site capacity analysis, program viability analysis, and any consultation records that were had of consultation meetings that occurred prior to this being brought forward as a board information package. Thank you.
Trustee Stanley, I'll ask for you to be succinct. You've spoken twice already.
Okay. Your final question or your final statement was, if we allow decisions of this scale to happen without transparency, without consultation, and without trustee debate, we are heading down a very dark path for governance. Given your experience with university governance, what do you think would be the consequence if we continue to neglect some of these aspects?
Sorry, I'm gonna have to interject. That would be asking for opinion. The questions are meant to be directed to the material that was presented. Are there any other questions from trustees? Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll call Lisa Russell, please.
Hello, I am Lisa Russell. I have three sons who would have attended French immersion at Holy Rosary, but will no longer be able to. My oldest is in grade four, my middle son is in grade one, and my youngest will be entering junior kindergarten next year. According to the last WCDSB student census, 47.5% of students report low well-being. A measurement that the WCDSB identifies as being derived from the following assets: school belonging, connection with their schools and neighborhoods, and connection with their peers. The report states that research consistently observes, quote, "a positive correlation between children's self-reported well-being and the perceived presence of these assets in their lives." Assets are considered actionable, meaningful areas where efforts can be focused to create the conditions and context in which children can thrive, unquote. With the unfounded decision to relocate the French immersion program, you are intentionally removing these assets, not only from the French immersion students, but from all students at Holy Rosary. The student census next step states, quote, "Community engagement is essential. Your input helps shape the future of our schools and success of our students. By working together, we can create learning environments where all students feel supported, safe, and able to thrive. Every voice matters, and we value the role you play in helping our students reach their full potential," unquote. However, prior to making this decision, you did not engage with any stakeholders, including trustees, the school, staff, parents, or the community, thereby failing in exceptional ways to see the far-reaching impact of your short-sighted decision. This decision is being positioned to address overcapacity at Holy Rosary, but your own numbers indicate that it will not meaningfully resolve this problem and causes harm in the process. Your projections indicate that St. Nicholas will go from 106% capacity to 153% capacity, but needing 11 portables, so from three to 11 portables, next September. Moving French immersion from Holy Rosary keeps Holy Rosary at overcapacity and fails to address the issue in the short term, as nine portables will be needed three years later in 2029. As a reminder, this site can only accommodate six portables. These numbers are also contingent on the French immersion families moving. You position that a new school in the Beaver Creek Meadows area, opening five years from now, will address the St. Nicholas overcapacity you will be creating. However, sorry, hold on one second. You will be causing. However, before you can provide relief, St. Nicholas will be at 169% capacity, requiring 14 portables, two more than they can accommodate, six more based on previous identified limitations such as bathrooms. This is not unlike the situation at Holy Rosary now. You also cannot assure us that this program will not move once again in five years when the new Beaver Creek Meadows school opens. Your documents identify the need for, quote, "a predictable and transparent method of locating French immersion programs," unquote. However, this is not in alignment. All of the above results from decisions you made in 2020 with the St. John Boundary Review, in which you knowingly put Holy Rosary at 129% capacity, needing six portables by 2024, based on your own projections. This is not far from the current reality of 136% capacity with eight portables Holy Rosary is now facing in 2025. The WCDSB took no proactive action then, and it is alarming that the only response from the September 22 board meeting to the above projections is that the WCDSB will continue to monitor overcapacity. What is the point of projections if they do not inform proactive solutions? The French immersion program was in place when the 2020 Boundary Review was conducted. The WCDSB is failing to continue to competently assess these issues. These decisions take children from their schools and neighborhoods time and time again. It's time to make the connection as to why almost half of the students at the WCDSB report low well-being. This decision is being made not because it is in... Sorry. This decision is being made not because it is in anyone's best interests, but because this is the decision that the WCDSB can make unilaterally, while creatively circumventing policy that would find more viable solutions with stakeholder input. In 2018 and 2021, there was a French immersion review committee that outlined how the WCDSB should address enrollment pressures at French immersion sites. This committee identified adding portables, changing boundaries, and opening new dual-track schools as considerations before pursuing other accommodation strategies. This distinctly indicates that moving a French immersion program to another existing school is not an accommodation strategy that should be considered. For the WCDSB to assess the next suitable accommodation strategy, a boundary review process as per board policy, APF 017, must be initiated to prompt stakeholder input. It is insufficient to loosely proclaim that this has been explored without proof or adherence to proper policy. To provide a more complete view of this issue, it is also important to understand that the French immersion program has limited predictable enrollment, thus it cannot account for the ongoing growth at Holy Rosary, as these numbers remain stable year after year. The program is one class away from operating at full capacity. This should be recognized as a permanent reality of Holy Rosary as maintaining the program at this site ensures continued quality. It is of note that this program is highly successful at this location. Although overcapacity is a challenging problem to address, it should not be resolved in a manner in which the leadership at WCDSB takes the path of least resistance, one that serves their own interests while shielding them from scrutiny by creatively circumventing policy that can thoroughly evaluate meaningful approaches to this reality. Solutions must not continually remove students from their school and neighborhoods. This undoubtedly impacts their well-being. In light of the above, it must be questioned whether this decision is truly about addressing overcapacity or if the motivations of the WCDSB are concealed. As a reminder to the trustees, your policy states, quote, "The Board of Trustees values a culture that holds consultation at its core. Consultation occurs to gain different perspectives. We believe that meaningful consultation is planned, purposeful, equitable, and that it contributes to enhanced decision-making. Consultation occurs because the views and experiences of our owners and stakeholders are valued and inform the work of the board," unquote. We expect you, the trustees, to explore all avenues in which you can fulfill your role to advocate on our behalf. We demand more from the leadership at this board, not just for the communities that you're impacting thus far, but for all WCDSB families who will face the consequences of this damaging approach the board continues to take. Directly from the ministry's last operational review of the WCDSB, quote, "The board's consultative approach to making key decisions related to governance and administration is documented in formal policy on governing style, which emphasizes outward vision rather than internal preoccupation, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints, strategic and collaborative leadership rather than administrative detail, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present, and being proactive instead of reactive," unquote. Your decision does not only contradict the above, but also WCDSB values in countless policies the multi-year strategic plan and the pastoral plan, to name a few. I would be happy to provide an extensive report myself, capturing all of the elements I was not able to cover in this timeframe. If, as a parent, I can understand the above in such a short timeframe, it highlights that either the WCDSB does not care or there is more than meets the eye. Neither is acceptable and should prompt an audit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. I'll ask if there's any clarifying questions from trustees on the material presented. Trustee Stanley.
Thank you very much for the very systematic presentation. I guess my question, both my two questions, would just revolve around the fact that you seem to be very engaged as one of the leaders of the parent community of Holy Rosary. You mentioned in your delegation that parents or the community were not engaged. Could you confirm that once again, that to your knowledge, no parents or community members were ever made aware of these plans or even the idea was floated out there before, you know, the last three weeks?
Yeah, so ultimately, us parents received, like, we found out, I found out through a Facebook post on our community group, and that was as a result of the decision being put forth in the agenda for the board meeting the Friday prior to September 22. And our understanding was that this decision has been made, and I think that's been reasserted a number of times, including in a SCTV news interview by the communications person at the WCDSB. So no, parents were not consulted whatsoever, and our understanding that nobody was consulted. This was a closed-door decision.
Okay, thank you. My second question, you spoke at length about the issue of portables with both Holy Rosary and St. Nicholas. One of the things we've heard from staff, one of the main rationales for the need for this move is that apparently they say that some parents are not happy or are not happy with the number of portables at Holy Rosary and that it's cutting into the amount of playground space. Is this a concern that you have heard from parents as well?
It's interesting. I have not heard that widespread. Of course, the obvious factor that we can see is that there's more portables and more portables getting added every year. But I don't think anyone would have anticipated this, this ruthless, careless decision being made and put forth as a result of, you know, poor planning, essentially. And so, I think for a lot of us parents, our community, what we're saying is, there is a field beyond the field that is attributed to the school. And why can we not just accept that or formalize that as part of the play space? I don't think our students are worse off with the scenario that they're in now. This situation, your decision, is making them worse off.
Are there any other questions from trustees? You may go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you for speaking to us and for keeping the conversation going for your children who are students at the WCDSB. You mentioned that the decision removes key assets for students. And as a student, I am interested in knowing what specific aspects of the Holy Rosary community... am interested in knowing what specific aspects of the Holy Rosy, Holy Rosary community you see most valuable for a student's sense of connection and well-being.
Yes, so I think what was misunderstood or not understood at all when this decision came about behind closed doors is ultimately, this is a very unique community. The French immersion group in and of itself, they're so lucky that they get to go to school together, class, like, the same class year by year by year. So we're looking at our grade seven students, they've been in the same class since grade one. These friendships that have formed in this class, they are very fortunate. Some of our community members have even expressed, you know, one of their sons being an only child, and these are their siblings. This is their family. And so for us as parents, like, seeing each other here today, you can see all of us here, this is family. So there is a very unique community when it comes to this French immersion program that is not, I think, seen or understood, and we are so unfortunate to have this, but we also have so much to lose. And so these kids, like, seeing these kids here today, I can ask, you know, Lillian, like, about her black belt and ask, you know, see, see other kids and ask them how things are going. We know each other. These are people we greet with hugs, and so this, this is severing family for these students. There are no good choices here, so if the program moves to St. Nicholas, for my family alone, we will not be going with the program. I spoke with Annalisa today and said, there could be a limo that pulls up to my house and takes my kids to school every day. We're not going with the program, because what you're asking me to choose is the French immersion program or my child's well-being, and I have to guard my child's well-being, even though it's going to be destroyed in the process. Keeping them at Holy Rosary will ultimately put it in my control that I can have them go to school from K to eight at one school. So this is, this is such a unique community, and we're so lucky. There's so much engagement, and that's why we're all here. I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Phillips.
You mentioned, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to ask, you mentioned circumventing proper policy. Can you clarify what you mean by that?
My mouth is getting so dry at this point, but I will try to speak a little bit more. So ultimately, from my view, when you look at the APF 017, there is a stipulation in there that ultimately identifies when French immersion programs are attended to, a boundary review does not need to occur. But what it doesn't, what it goes on to further say is that a rationale for a boundary review could be site restrictions and building restrictions and attending to capacity issues, which are at the heart of this issue. So when you're looking at the decision that the WCDSB has made, it's because, and they've put it out in their own documentation, it's because of overcapacity in site and building limitations. It's not pertaining to the, the program itself. So I think it's a very creative way to circumvent a boundary review when you're not actually attending to the program itself. So let's say, for instance, the program was expanding, and they wanted to move it to another school because they want to expand the program, and they couldn't do that at Holy Rosary. That's not the case here. The case here is that they've identified that they're making this decision because ultimately they're attending to overcapacity in site and buildings limitations, which would be rationale for a boundary review, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. I will call Emma Watson up, please.
Good evening, trustees and senior administration. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the mother of two daughters, Ella, who is almost nine and in grade four French immersion, and Maya, who is seven and in grade two French immersion. These are two of the 141 students that you are planning to displace. That's 1.4% of the affected population, but to me, they are my everything, 100% of my everything. As we go through my delegation tonight, I ask you to keep the children like Ella and Maya in mind, to picture their faces, their classrooms, their friendships, because that's who this decision affects the most. This is the public that you serve. I'm also the co-chair of the Catholic School Advisory Council, where every elected member has children in the French immersion program. This shows how deeply invested our community is. Outside of being a wife and a mother, I work in workforce planning at one of the largest employers in the region. My job is to help my clients manage change, finding solutions that are viable, feasible, and desirable. So when I say I'm qualified to speak about this change, I mean both personally and professionally. When I first sat down to write this, I was angry. I wanted you to feel the hurt and the frustration that we have been feeling as a community, but I know anger does not invite listening. So instead, tonight, I will walk you through the data and present why the only implementation option is to grandfather in the existing FI students and their families. Let's start with your seemingly preferred option of relocating all current FI students to St. Nicholas. Viability. Based on your own data, about 50% of FI students live in Westvale and can walk to Holy Rosary. Relocation would eliminate walkability for most, if not all, families. This severs children from their home, community, and their home parish. St. Nicholas is not even in the Holy Rosary FI boundary. In moving students, we risk losing as many as 50% of them from the program altogether, as many will choose to stay in the English stream at Holy Rosary rather than uproot their families. Smaller class sizes and split grades have become a real possibility, threatening the long-term viability of the FI program. And we must remember, the WCDSB already provides access to FI at one-quarter the level of the WRDSB. Reducing French immersion participation even further would deepen an already significant equity gap for Catholic families seeking French education. Feasibility. This solution is also logistically challenging. St. Nicholas has no FI program today, as students are currently directed to Sir Edgar Bauer. The commute is 5.7 kilometers or more, with nearly a one-hour later start time. This is nearly impossible, or actually impossible, for families, or for many working parents. There's no before and after care for grade seven and eights, and limited spots for grades one to six. Financially, this change is a huge burden on families. Additional mileage costs for the longer commutes to and from school, lost wages from parents who accommodate this new schedule, mental health or therapy costs, and as the parent of an anxious child, these costs are very real. And additional childcare costs of $38 per day per child. That's $798 per month per child, or nearly $16,000 a year for two children. And this assumes there are enough spaces, which we know there are not. Desirability. This option of relocating children is overwhelmingly undesirable. Your inboxes are full of emails from upset parents. I am confident your survey results show high opposition. And we know the research. Sudden displacement negatively impacts student morale, engagement, and achievement. This does not even discuss the impacts of organizational change on employee morale and turnover. Now let's look at an alternative, grandfathering in the existing FI students and phasing out the program at Holy Rosary. Viability. This approach reduces overcapacity gradually and predictably. Current students finish the program where they started. Staff transitions hap, happen one at a time, not all at once, which preserves morale and stability. Feasibility. Keeping the current students at Holy Rosary is the simplest, most cost-effective solution. No new busing, no major communication or transition plans for the school board, and parents with younger children can make informed decisions about whether to enter FI elsewhere. Desirability. This option respects the choices that families made when they enrolled their children. It minimizes disruption, reduces anxiety and preserves mental health, it maintains equity, and it keeps student and staff together. Notably, it also aligns with the WCDSB's own past guidance and documentation. The FI Review Committee documentation, as you've heard, recommended strategies such as adding portables, adjusting boundaries, or opening dual-track schools before relocating entire programs. In the March 26, 2018 French Review Update, the first identified theme was, and I quote, "Students should be offered access to the FI program in the same school from grade one to eight." This was a priority then, and it remains a priority for families now. Relocation of students was not a solution then, and is not the solution today. In the April 9, 2018 Public Agenda, parents and staff overwhelmingly selected keeping students in the French immersion program at one school from grade one to eight as their top priority. That report was prepared by, or reviewed by, current staff members, including the FI FSL consultant and the CFO, the Executive Superintendent of Corporate Services. This principle was significant enough to also be included in the former director's 2018 annual report at that time. And the 2020-2021 French Immersion Review Committee, which includes the current manager of planning and the FSL consultant, further emphasized this point, recommending that the WCDSB continue to offer FI in dual-track schools and prioritize offering FI in grade one to eight configuration, or one consistent with English programming in the same facility. Your own documents consistently warned against moving entire programs. At the end of the day, I feel confident that this is a financial decision, as opposed to capacity issue. But this proposed solution has costs. The WCDSB receives about $15,000 per student. If just 25% of FI students leave for the WRDSB, that's a loss of over $528,000 every single year. If 50% leave, that loss exceeds $1 million annually. This risk is real. On top of that, moving portables costs thousands of dollars per unit. Your own projections tell us you'll likely need to add them back to Holy Rosary within a few years. Moving portables to St. Nicholas for your proposed solution is unnecessary. These are not responsible fiscal choices. So in the end, moving the current FI students to St. Nicholas does not solve overcapacity. It isn't logically workable, is, it does not make sense for students or families, it does not increase the viability of the French program, and it does not make financial sense. The more I dig, the less I, the less sense this makes. One thing I failed to mention at the outset of my speech is that we are ferociously tenacious community. We do not give up, and we do not let go. The French immersion community you have built here at Holy Rosary is something to be celebrated, not torn apart. We will not let this go. So I want to end with your words, our current director's words from the start of the school year. This year, we are called to listen, truly listen, to the voices of our students, our families, our staff, and each other. This theme invites us to approach one another with open hearts and open minds. When we listen with purpose and humility, recreate the conditions for compassion to take root and for true understanding to grow. So I ask you, listen to the children, the families, and the teachers. You've shown before that you can pivot when community feedback and data point to a better solution, as with the Southeast Galt Boundary Review. I'm aware.
Right, that's time. Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Phillips.
Just to clarify, you were talking about the option of phasing out the, the French immersion program. Does, does phasing out the French, I'm so sorry, this microphone's being really horrible here. Does phasing out the, the French immersion, oh, we're swapping it out? Am I screaming? Okay. I'm Portuguese, so I scream a lot. Here we go. Okay, so does phasing out the French immersion program, one class at a time over seven years, adequately address overcapacity, in your opinion? I just wanted to clarify, based on what you were saying, I wanted to understand, I couldn't understand that.
Yes, so moving the class one at a time can make sense for overcapacity. It makes at least as much sense as moving a program that is at an overcapacity school to a program, to a school that is also overcapacity. But if you choose to address it one classroom at a time, you are predictably moving the student numbers. So let's say 50% of those students are already within Holy Rosary, so they would stay, let's say, at Holy Rosary. That's at least, let's say, 10 kids in the average 20 class that would potentially not now be going to the French immersion program at Holy Rosary. That is 10 less students. And as this program moves forward, that would continue on and reduce overcapacity at Holy Rosary. But as I said, I do not believe this is purely an overcapacity issue. I think this is a financial issue. And so I think whatever is going on here, we would love some transparency, and we would love to understand, is this really? Because right now, I think you can all agree, we're just kind of shifting around the problem. If you're moving it from Holy Rosary to St. Nicholas, you're taking an overcapacity school and making another overcapacity school. We are not really solving the issue here. I'm aware that you guys are having a 2026, I believe, Boundary Review for the new Baden School that may impact Holy Rosary, according to your long-term accommodation plan. And I think, you know, that transparency of what does that mean for us is important here as well, because how will that meaningfully impact St. Nicholas and Holy Rosary in 2026 and beyond? We need these numbers, we need to underst, we need to understand this. Thank you.
Trustee Stanley.
You for the very, very data-driven presentation. It's always good to hear that, numbers backing up some claims. So given that, you talked about the risk of families who might choose to stay at Holy Rosary and not, and discontinue their involvement in the, in the French immersion, or alternatively, families might choose to move their children or their students to the public board. Is that a sentiment you've heard a lot from parents?
100%. There's a lot of talk. As you guys are all aware, Westvale offers French immersion, which is just down the street from our current school, and as you guys are aware, that the public board offers significantly greater access to French immersion. So I think it's a real possibility that people will move to, to the public board, and I think that's at a great cost financially to our own board, and I think that's a problem, and it will just further disrupt friends and families and communities, and it's heartbreaking, because I think the success that this board has had, year over year, 20% growth, is because the board has been so strong. I truly believe it is because you guys have done such a good job, people want to be a part of our board, Catholic or non-Catholic. And so I don't think that's something we should take for granted. We want to continue this, we want to continue that growth, and we want to continue being a board that people choose and keep children together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees? Trustee Sakura.
Thank you. I noticed you, I just want for some clarification. Let's look at an alternative, grandfathering existing FI students and phasing out the program at Holy Rosary. So I'm assuming you're assuming that further classes would potentially move to St. Nicholas, and keeping the existing grades at Holy Rosary through their graduation.
Yes, so my proposal is that it does recognize that there is an issue at hand. I recognize this is not an issue for the board. You do have overcapacity and limited space, that's a reality. But yes, I'm proposing that at the very least, we have students that are currently in a program with friends, with teachers that are defined. They know who they're going to get, they have a paired, you know, teacher one, two, grade three.
They know who they're going to get. They have a paired, you know, teacher one, two, grade three, four, five, six. And so they know who they're going to get. And so I recommend, if you can at least leave the students who are in this program B, they can see this program through, which is very successful, as you know. But it also then allows that parents who maybe have younger siblings can make an informed decision of whether or not they want to continue on with FI. Of course, I would like to say, please, just leave French immersion at Holy Rosary overall. I think that is 100% the ideal option. But I do recognize that there is a challenge here. So at the very least, if you must move the program, please leave the children that are in the program B. I didn't get a chance to say this, but I would love to say to you right now. Would you be willing to hinge your own job on the French immersion program remaining viable under your plan? Because if not, how can you ask us to believe in and follow through with what you do not believe in yourselves? Thank you.
Follow-up question.
So as a follow-up question, I noticed your children are currently in French immersion. I'm assuming that's all children you have right now.
Yes.
But you realize, and some of the emails coming from parents, they have children who are not yet in the French immersion program. So you realize your proposal would be providing a challenge for them because they would have to potentially have one child going to St. Nicholas and one child at Holy Rosary.
But that then opens up to the board to maybe recommend grandfathering in those siblings that may be out of bounds. For those that are in bounds, their homeschool would be Holy Rosary. But even if it's not French, you know, if there's somebody who lives in, let's say, site mark boundary, you know, now their kid is not entering French, why not grandfather them in so they can be with the sibling? Which you guys have done over precedent anyways, when you have kind of done boundary reviews. Leave the children together. At the end of the day, I think that's pretty important for everyone. Leave the children together.
But there wouldn't be any French program for the younger children not yet enter.
Yes, and that is an inequity that the board has to consider. I am not saying that that is ideal, but I am recognizing that the board has a decision here to make. And at the very least, leave the existing children alone. If not, please leave the whole program alone.
One of the consistent concerns we've heard tonight is that there seems to have been some failures in process here and consultation. You mentioned your professional expertise is helping organizations to manage change. So my question would be, what could the WCDSB have done differently or better to manage this process to date?
That's a great question. Yeah, so from the outset, I think it'd be providing access to the information, so it's transparent and obvious. And so that way, parents don't have to go digging through years of documentation to try and figure out what is going on here. Second of all, it'd be, as my previous delegations have said, it's really engaging with the community. I recognize this is being decided upon as an operational change. That is actually very much what I do, is operational change in organizations. But that doesn't mean that you don't consult. That doesn't mean that you don't provide that level of insight and stakeholder engagement. That, in my work, that is critical to what I do, is stakeholder engagement. And it is not to come to people saying, this is the change we have doing, now figure it out. That does not go well. That is not best practice in change management principles.
You very much.
Any other questions from trustees? I have one. You mentioned about the cost of childcare
Yes.
per day. I was curious what you were, or how you accounted for that in terms of number of weeks? Because this, it's not a year-round program offering.
Sure, so the $38, I'd have to get my whole calculator out. But the $38 per day is from the Rising Oaks St. Nicholas, which is the childcare that is at St. Nicholas. And then I believe I did a kind of an estimation of the number of weeks within a school year across approximately 12 months, or sorry, 10 months. And then obviously multiplying that to get the 12,000, that's the two children, so taking that twice, is making that 16,000 figure. But it's using those kind of about 10 months' worth of weeks for the before and after care.
Thank you very much. Okay, not seeing any more questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll call on Harriet Cullen to please come up.
Hello. Hello, my name is Harriet Cullen. I'm an immigrant to this country, to Canada, 13 years ago. I want to make something clear. I love this country and I fly the Canadian flag outside my house. I am a proud Canadian. I met my husband Sean nine years ago. Sean is a native Canadian, part of a proud community of First Nations. We don't come from money and everything we have achieved has been through hard work, working hard and dedication. Through blood, sweat and a lot of tears, we have bought our house next to Holy Rosary. Why Holy Rosary, you ask? Well, we had a seven-month-old little Jacob following us around, a little First Nations, first-generation Canadian baby. Where this, this is where this story really begins. Even though Jacob is seven months old, education was very important to me. I have dyslexia and, no, I cannot spell dyslexia. But I wasn't diagnosed until high school, which means I missed a huge part of my education trying to survive. However, it made me powerful in different ways. My husband Sean can't be here tonight because he works a lot. I love you, Sean. Sean has a strong Catholic faith and went to St. Agnes, Our Lady of Lords and St. David's. Why two elementary schools? Well, he comes from a single mother, one of five. She's a powerful woman, but times were hard and Sean often had no lunches for school and was often hungry. Moved, they moved around for a better life. However, what they had was faith and their Catholic community. That's what we wanted. So as parents, we wanted to have our kids do better than us, be better than us. From the moment I enrolled Jacob into Holy Rosary, I prayed, talked about, lived for French immersion. I worked hard with Jacob for his reading and writing to make sure that if we were lucky enough to get into French immersion, he was ready. All I talked about to the teachers was French immersion. It meant everything to have my kids in this amazing program. What I haven't talked about is my daughter Lily. She is two years younger and already a powerful leader. Fast forward, my son is now grade two, French immersion. Yes, we did it. My daughter SK very much excited for French immersion and a very proud set of parents giving their kids the future they didn't have. My daughter has on her calendar for January, the day my mom signs me up to French immersion. That's the importance of this program. So commute, you are thinking, make it happen. The sad truth is, we can't. My husband often works 12 hours a day and needs our only car to get to work. I run a home daycare licensed through the region of Waterloo with five families in it. I walk to school every day with my orange wagon, five daycare kids in tow and my two kids. My orange wagon has become a huge part of this school community and kids and parents say hi, making small talk and becoming our biggest supporters. People look for my orange wagon at pickup and drop-off times. Mums often stand and talk around it for so long that Sandra, our principal, has to tell us to go to work. So you see, if you move this program, I have to tell my kids they can no longer attend the education that I have worked hard to get them into. Please reconsider before taking this away. Just to get here tonight, I had to lean on my French immersion community to babysit my kids, drive me here and hopefully get me home. This is more than numbers to my family. This is our lives, our community, our everything. My kids will never get another opportunity to attend French immersion. Please look into your hearts and keep French immersion at Holy Rosary. Look at providing buses for French immersion kids. We are not here to make your life hard. We are here because you have the opportunity to make 141 families thrive and be empowered for bright futures by keeping French immersion at Holy Rosary and countless more generations to come. I stand here today for the families like me who can't. I stand here for my kids. I stand here for the future of our Catholic kids trying to do better than the previous generation. Please stand tall, stand for French immersion at Holy Rosary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Stanley.
I want to thank you for your beautiful anecdotes about the community at Holy Rosary because I think we do have something special here and we need to keep it. Actually, I should just mention something. I feel like I have a bit of a historical connection to Holy Rosary because I didn't go there as a student, but every Thursday night I would go there as a Cub Scout and play basketball in the gym. So I do feel like the community has some part in me somewhere, for sure. I miss it. So my question is, you've obviously talked about the importance of the community there. What do you think would be the most serious negative consequences of dividing this Catholic community, Catholic school community that you've built up there? What are the most serious costs of this move?
My family. I don't know, I'm not very good with numbers like everyone else is, and everyone else did a great job with that. For me, by moving this program away, you're moving a very successful program. And the reason it's successful is because of all these guys here, because of all the teachers and because of the principal, Sandra, as well. If you take those three away, it's not going to be as successful. If you move this program, it means that a lot of students, again, I don't know numbers, but a lot of students aren't going to be able to attend. I know I was speaking about my family, but I represent a lot more families than you think. Families in French immersion aren't privileged. They don't come from means. They've had the ability and amazing opportunity to go into this program. And now that potentially is being taken away. And I believe it's going to be higher than 50% that won't be able to attend your program. Not because they don't want to out of spite, because they can't attend at St. Nick's. You say it's 10 minutes away, but I can't buy a minivan and pack 12 kids into it. It's not feasible for me. It's not something we can do. And we can't get a second vehicle. So it's a huge cost to everybody. And I speak for a lot more families than you would think. I hope that answers your question.
No, it did. I wanted to know your personal thoughts because that's really what we need to hear. So thank you very much.
Questions from trustees? Trustee Sukhara.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm glad you're a proud Canadian, as am I.
Thank you.
You've mentioned, and many of the other delegations have mentioned, 141 families. Is it really 141 families? It's 141 students, as I understand, and many are indicating that they have two or three children. So is it possibly half that number of families?
There could be. Again, I don't know. It's just, we got told it was 141 students and
You're extrapolating the families.
Families, yeah. They're all families.
Yeah. Then, yeah.
Yeah.
We went through, you know, a boundary review change when I was, it was, wasn't easy, but something we had to live with.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Not seeing any other questions from trustees. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on then to 5.1 MYSP update.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I'm going to invite forward Josh Fulan from Maximum City, who's going to provide us with a MYSP final draft. To the Board of Trustees, this is in response to the consultation process. I think some people might want to leave, so we might want to wait just a moment until we have families who need to go. Josh can set up in the meantime.
Bring up where the H. Thank you for your... I am here this evening to present a final draft of the multi-year strategic plan. But first, I want to take us through the process, just to remind us of the rigorous engagement process that we followed to get to this point. And also show you the feedback that this group shared about a month ago and how we incorporated that into the final draft of the plan. And then I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. So the following slides do show the final draft of the multi-year strategic plan for 2025 to 2029. We are recommending a five-year term for the strategic plan. Our job, our role in this endeavor is as process stewards. So I just want to pause here with this slide and remind us of the robust process that we followed. And that is how we got to the final draft, was by respecting this process, engaging over 5,000 participants from your community to give us that evidence base, along with the other evidence sources that go into a strategic plan, to make it resonant, to make it educationally defensible and to make it have an impact ultimately when it is time to operationalize it. So a strong process leads to an informed plan. At our last meeting on September 8, we presented our process as well as a draft of the plan, and we had a discussion about both. In terms of the development process, there were many comments that spoke to the robustness of it, highlighting its reach particularly to students. There was a strong student voice representation in that consultation process. And many of the comments that you folks shared with us on that evening reflected that. There were questions about the length of the term. So we're coming forward this evening with that recommendation for five years. In terms of the content, there were many comments in the discussion that affirmed the alignment of the recommendation to other plans, such as the pastoral plan. There were questions about reducing the number of strategic objectives to make it more succinct, which you will see in the new plan we have done. And then there were many comments around sort of wordsmithing, getting the language right. You know, shared understanding of words that are extremely important to the learning organization. And along with the working group, we have done quite a bit of work to shift that language. So the changes may seem small enough. So the changes may seem small in number, but I think they are large in terms of impact because we are really trying to get the language right so that the folks, particularly the leadership team, can articulate this strategic plan and its objectives. So you will see many of these adjustments have been made in terms of the wording in the final strategic plan, which you will see momentarily. First, uh, I just want to remind us of, this is the structure for strategic plans that we typically recommend in learning organizations. So you'll see that there's a mission statement that sits at the top and that sort of tells us what the organization does. It's fundamental person, purpose. The vision statement shows us where you are headed as a learning organization. And those two have not been changed. And it was good to see them on the stair, just above the staircase as I entered this evening. And values are the things that guide the, the actions and the behaviors of the organization, its members. And the main pieces that we have worked on are the strategic priorities or pillars. So there are three of those. It's a good number for strategic priorities. We statements, these are very important because they provide shared purpose and understanding and strategic objectives. And those are more operational in nature and they sit beneath the strategic priorities and operationalize each of them. And another reminder is that when we do this work, we want to see coherence across an organization's plans. We want to see things, things such as common structures and common language that you can trace in a through line across those plans. And the strategic plan is kind of the plan that sits above them all and directs the other plans to, to be operationalized. I'm going to go over, uh, the, the main sort of guiding statements and then show you the final draft of the plan. Because I think, as I said, there, it's important to see the coherence and the through line between all of these. Mission statement. As disciples of Christ, we educate and nurture hope in all learners to realize their full potential to transform God's world. Vision statement. Our Catholic schools, art of the community, success for each, a place for all. Guiding principles or values. Our spirituality is the foundation of our seven guiding principles. Polism, lifelong learning, equity, collaboration, excellence and accountability, reflection, reconciliation. And again, the seven gospel values, which came up quite consistently, consistently and the Catholic faith theme in our consultation record. And those seven values are compassion, forgiveness, justice, love, hope, integrity and humility. The three pastoral themes, uh, that will carry the Waterloo Catholic District School Board through the next MYSP are listen, engage and serve. So again, you want to see those words reflected in your strategic plan as well. And here are the three pillars that we are putting forward. Learning, serving, belonging, with faith at the core of all three. A note about these three priorities, they're not meant to be seen as separate pillars. They're really an interdependent ecosystem of pillars. So they are mutually reinforcing. If one is doing well and the other one is not doing well, then that one that's not doing well will pull down the one that is thriving. So you want them all to be sort of aligned and, and resourced and operationalized well. This is not the visualization ultimately, ultimately that you will have. This is just a concept of Venn diagram. In the next step, there will be a sort of a graphic organization of the pillars themselves. Beneath each of the strategic priorities, we have a we statement. These are really important. We, we always recommend that there's a we statement for your strategic priorities because it does establish that collective responsibility. That first person plural pronoun is really important in strategic planning. So for learning, we have, we set high expectations and challenge learners. For serving, we listen and serve in education and faith. Belonging, we foster meaningful connections for students and staff. And for each of the strategic parties, there are four strategic objectives. I will read these out and then take your questions. For learning, support multiple pathways and tools for success. Accelerate innovation and build transferable, future-ready skills. Engage students as co-creators in their learning. Transform learning through leadership and staff support and development. Serving. Celebrate and promote our distinct Catholic identity. Develop faith and live gospel values. Strengthen connections between home, school and parish. Connect faith formation to learning. Belonging. Create self-safe, welcoming environments that reflect our diversity. Promote a sense of mattering and dignity. Foster equitable, inclusive and barrier-free learning and work environments. Engage families and build community partnerships. And here we have all of the, uh, all three strategic pillars and all 12 strategic objectives crowded onto one slide. And this is for the, for the intent of, of presenting them to you as a whole. So you could take a look at them all in one place. And, and I will welcome your questions just in a moment. Some of the questions that you want to be asking that we ask ourselves at this moment. Are your strategic objectives and your strategic priorities informed by the community consultation? I can answer that question. Yes, they are. They are strongly informed by the 5,300 participants who took part in that consultation development program. Are they educationally defensible? So we have gone to the working group and truth tested that question with them. Can you draw a straight line between them and the classroom? Are they operationally possible? Can they be monitored after implementation? And is the language resonant and understandable? Those are the, sort of the criteria we look at at the end. Finally, a note about the monitoring methodology and the implementation. That is in, in development and will continue to be in development in parallel to the finalizing of the multi-year strategic plan. And that is my last slide. So I'll go back to this one here and open it up to questions.
Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee Stanley.
Okay, first question, mission statement. Did you just lift it out of the prayer from 2010? Because it seems to just be that line there. Disciples of Christ, we, we educate and nurture hope in all learners to realize their full potential to transform God's world. Is there, does that come from anywhere else or is that just from the prayer?
Thank you for the question. We did not, we were not involved in the creation or the iteration of either the mission or the vision statement. So whatever we have on the screen.
So you're bringing an old one. Continuing, you're continuing forward with an existing mission statement?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it normal to, um, not develop a new mission statement for a new plan?
I would say it's not atypical because mission, vision and values are often eternal in organizations. So you're not going to change those things every four or five years. You certainly might adjust them. There might be words or things that you adjust to them, but they tend to be eternal to organizations. Your values, your mission, your vision, those things, your fundamental purpose doesn't really change. On the other hand, your strategic plan needs to be updated every four or five years because the world changes around it.
Second question. You said that you'd made an adjustment from belonging to unity, but I didn't see the word unity anywhere else, I don't think. Where was that change made?
So.
Because I just saw a lot of belongings, but no unity. And that was to give credit to trustee Garen. That was his excellent idea, I think. The word unity is, we really liked that.
Appreciate that, uh, comment and your question. So I'll go back to the slide here. This slide here captures all of the wordsmithing suggestions we collected that night. This is for transparency sake. This is everything we collected. We did our best to include everything where there was, uh, not joint determination to update things or there were concerns around particular words, we did not include them. Unity was one of those words.
At this point, it hasn't been incorporated substantially.
That's correct. Yeah, the word, the word unity was not included and it was, it's left as belonging.
Okay. The other thing that stood out to me, and this is my last comment for now, is the, the learning pillar. If you go to that, right? So we've got one that says, support multiple pathways, support multiple pathways and tools for success. That's important. But I feel that we're, uh, we're missing a pillar emphasizing academic excellence. And I think parents are going to go, hmm, where's that there exactly?
Again, thanks for the question. I think we had the same conversation in the working group, or at least Todd and I had the conversation. And we thought that this we statement here, under learning establishes what, exactly what you've described. We set high expectations and challenge learners. That is about the quality of your program and academic excellence. So, uh, it's expressed in the we statement, which in some ways is the, the umbrella statement for all of the strategic objectives that sit here.
That makes sense to a point, but it just seems like even the sub, at least one of the sub points might want to reinforce that a bit. That's just my gut feeling when I see, when I see that.
I appreciate that. And can you say a little bit more about what kind of language or things you might like to see reflected there? So academic.
I would put it under the accelerate innovation, excellence and build transferable future-ready skills. So just put the word excellence in after innovation. That might be enough.
So.
Or, or actually before innovation. But accelerate excellence, comma, innovation and build transfer formidable or transferable future-ready skills.
Thank you for that suggestion. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Trustee Wyler.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the culmination of a good number of months in bringing this forward. One of the things that I think could help us at the board level, with each of the objectives playing a critical point. And you mentioned around if one of them isn't doing so well, it's going to pull the others down. Is there any appetite as part of the we statements to derive like a set of strategic questions that we should be asking ourselves as we work through various decisions? And I'm thinking about some of the pressures to these objectives that we're going to face over the next couple of years. Growth is one of them. But those questions that can really help us navigate and work through those decisions, keeping those objectives front and mind.
Thank you for the question. The answer is yes, and those questions belong in the monitoring methodology. So where you, you want your, your plan, um, you know, we like to say a plan on a page kind of thing. We want it to fit the main plan, the public-facing plan. You want it to be succinct and set and, and fit on a page approximately. A guiding question or sort of a monitoring question that anticipates challenges like growth. Growth was a big, one of the big themes we heard in the consultation program, as you know, can go into the monitoring methodology in the backend of the plan. So you may have a column that says your objective. You may have a source of evidence. You may have a person, a staff member responsible. And then you may have guiding questions to help sort of track and anticipate challenges and also for, uh, the leadership team to, to consider as you report on the plan itself. Does that make sense?
Yep. No, that's great. Thank you.
Do Phillips.
Thank you for your presentation and I wanted to say thank you for incorporating all of our voices in here and parents and students. I think you've done a wonderful job. My only comment is, um, I think it's probably worth, in my opinion, I strongly think it's worth revisiting our mission statement. Because, um, since I, since I began as a trustee, the whole idea of transforming God's world, I never felt that it resonated with me because a transform, okay, I'm going to have to change my. Transform by definition, it means to make a thorough and dramatic change in the form, appearance or character of. And I, and I feel that, you know, biblical scripture does not change. It cannot be transformed. And we as a Catholic board are to follow biblical scripture and to show the morals and values unto our children and, and carry that on. And I, I wonder if it's worth revisiting the mission statement because I, I think there's something worthwhile there. Because it's, it's just not something to transform. It's something to build, to build and, and to respect.
Thank you, trustee. I appreciate the, um, the comment and, and the sort of the revisiting the mission statement is certainly something that can be done separately. This does not defend, uh, or, or prove that sort of transform is, is the right word. But remember that you have transformed learning in your strategic plan in, in this, in the fourth strategic bullet here. Now transforming learning and transforming the world are much different things. So point taken. But again, we are always looking for that consistency of language throughout the plan. So the mission statement, the vision statement, if you look through them, we were looking for words that could connect all those things. But of course, if the leadership team feels like the mission statement needs to be revisited and updated, that is something, something that you can pursue 100%.
And just to follow up, um, I, I don't have any issues with transforming, transforming learning. I mean, um, we have kids with disabilities in our system that need a different way of learning. You know, there's different ways that goes about and I totally support that. I just think transforming God's world and combining it with religion, that's where I'm kind of a little icky about it. But I totally agree with you that it's great for, for learning.
Thank you.
Trustee Garen.
Through you, Chair. So thank you very much for the presentation. I'm, I'm, I'm quite excited about what you've got there. I think there's sort of the simplicity and like, that's easy to, easy to grasp. Can you elaborate, like, what are, what are you foreseeing in terms of the graphic that how this is going to be presented? Is that?
It, it's a really good question because the, the visual representation will mean a lot to people. And your, and for communication purposes, the visual sometimes can be more important than the words themselves. Having spent, you know, eight months working on these words, I, I'm, I, I can admit that. So what I would suggest is you work, is you work with your communication staff and figure out what the physical and visual representation of these three pillars should look like. And we can certainly give you guidance on that as well, pointing at Todd, who has lots of experience in that realm. And sometimes that is a key piece is once you get the content squared away, the words, you can move on to the next step. I don't recommend moving on to that next step until this has been finalized though. And there are various graphics that you can look to and some really good examples, I would say, in your peer boards that we have done work for, um, that we can point you to, to say, you know, these are things that, that we think resonate well visually and communicate ideas visually quite well. So I'm happy to provide those examples and share how the process worked in those other boards as well. Yes.
Just to there.
Through you, Chair. In terms of the strategic priorities, um, the next step obviously is looking at some of the objectives. And typically we go out to our community, um, on an annual basis, at least getting feedback on, on those objectives. Can you help me understand what that looks like after we sort of finalize the strategic priorities in terms of next steps?
Yeah, I can certainly, uh, start the answer and maybe, there may be somebody from staff who wants to elaborate. But typically, uh, there is sort of a monitoring survey that goes, what goes out annually. I believe it went out in the spring last year. And that would simply ask folks, you know, how are we doing on these objectives? And it's mostly quantitative in nature, that survey. So it's sort of rating things, some opportunity to provide feedback. And the research team and the, the staff responsible for monitoring and tracking the, the strategic plan would look at the results of that survey and use it as one of the measurements for how you are progressing on your strategic objectives. It's not the only measurement, but it's one source of evidence for sure. Does that, does that help? And I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to add to that, uh, from the staff side. But that is, um, the, the practice that we.
Pretty much sums it up. So we, at this next juncture we're at is developing the indicators. And we used logic models last time to actually move through that process to determine, like you said, the consultation around what those indicators should be and then how we're going to measure them. And that's how we created the dashboard. If you know of the current dashboard that we have, that we, we are continuing to monitor that data. So once we determine what the indicators are going to be through using logic models, then at that point, then we will develop the dashboard and the monitoring strategy to support it. So those are kind of the next steps, once this is done. And also in terms of graphics, we've had lots of conversation with, um, Lemma and the, and the team and communications to determine where, where we should go with the graphics to help support the plan and, and appreciate any input and, uh, expertise in that area and how we can make it very visually appealing. And, uh, you know, moving forward. Does that answer a little bit just the dashboard?
And, and your, your question speaks to something a teacher of mine once said and had stayed with me. A, a strategy is not something you have, it's something you do. Right? So it's what you, you will. So it's what you, you will have the strategy, but having the strategy is not the point. Doing the strategy, implementing and tracking it and making sure that it is having impact through implementation is the real work, not, not having the plan.
Just D'Sacar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now you're proposing this as a five-year plan and there's three pillars. So I'm just wondering, had you considered expanding it to five pillars? Cause I know the previous time it, you, you showed us the three pillars, but now you're proposing for five years. So I'm wondering.
I appreciate the question. I, uh, we don't think of the term and the number of pillars as needing to match because you are focusing on all of these at the same time concurrently. I know in the pastoral plan, for example, there is sort of intentionality around this year might be this pillar or this theme, next year, we're going to focus on this pillar or this theme. But as I said at the outset, these are really interdependent, mutually reinforcing elements that need to be brought to bear every single day in the learning organization. So every year you will be focusing on learning, serving, belonging. Every, during each of those, the five-year term, it's not a question of focusing on one at the expense of the other. Does that answer your question?
I, um, obviously what you've seen tonight is that obviously there's, there's challenges with consultation and public consultation and, and everything that we do. If we're going with a five-year plan, that's a long period of time. So we've talked about this a little bit before, but I think it's worth just revisiting again in our minds. How do we balance the amount of the, the degree to which the plan is based on our consultation feedback versus our vision and our leaders? You know, if we ask community members where they're at today, it might be different than where they need to be in five years. And how do we, how do we navigate that problem?
Yeah, uh, thank you. So the plan learns through implementation. So as you implement the plan and collect feedback on it, it doesn't mean that it is set in stone, right? So if after a year or two of monitoring, you are getting feedback around certain things that need to have more resources devoted to them. If you have to have things, if you have to adjust certain things, the way you track things, the way you operationalize them, there is room within the monitoring and the tracking to make those adjustments. And if a major change came along, if something, you know, cataclysmic happened in three or four years, you could revisit the plan. That's certainly possibly, I mean, uh, we, I think we all, everyone in this room remembers COVID. And during COVID, plan, uh, many plans were put aside so that boards could do the things they needed to do to deliver education at that time. So things like that, I'm not wishing another pandemic on us, but things like that can precipitate fast reactive actions. We typically recommend four or five years because we think that is the right term for living with these strategic objectives and implementing them and seeing the change that happens, right? Three years is sort of too short, four or five is about right in our estimation to track those, that change and see if the implementation is working.
So under, under the Education Act, we're not completely bound to this described for five. Is that right? I just want to make sure that we, we retain the ability to do exactly what you said under the Education Act. Is that true?
I, I do not know if, if under the Education Act that is true. I have seen boards adjust their plans. I've been part of that, uh, but I'm not going to, uh, I'm not going to say that the Education Act says that for sure. Yeah.
Any other questions from trustees? Your point, no? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Sorry you had to see my desktop there, which was very.
Moving on to 5.2 Pastoral Plan Update.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to welcome John Murphy, who I hope is standing behind the wall where I can't see him. If not, I'll have to go out and grab him. He is here, I've confirmed that. He will come up tonight and walk through our pastoral plan with you today, the highlights of the plan. In, in connection to Josh and, and what he did with the MYSP, you will see three themes in our plan as well, but our plan's intention is to see this MYSP through wherever it is that we land. We've built in our inability to adjust and flex the plan accordingly. So again, the three themes will be able to flex across the entire duration of the multi-year strategic plan, depending on where we land in terms of years. So I wanted to sort of get that out to all of you first and foremost. We actually also have some graphics to share with you today that John was able to put together. One is one of those visual signs that you will see. And the other is I will bring them both around to you. And we have some treats for you that I'll pass around as well. John, thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I, uh, great to be here. I always love being invited to these evening sessions. It usually means I miss about three hockey practices with my kids, so I appreciate, so. I'll, I'll stay to answer questions as well. Really nice to be here. Our pastoral, pastoral plan and pastoral themes have played a big role in our, in the life of our Catholic schools in the last number of years. And we're really excited to just share a little bit about what's, what's coming ahead of us. And so my name is John Murphy. I'm the Religion and Family Life Consultant. I am one of the individuals involved with putting this together, but believe me, lots of help and lots of contributions. Just wanted to let you know that the contributions to our new pastoral theme came from every corner of our system. We had a pastoral advisory committee that met three times last year in person. We had elementary and secondary teachers, chaplains, we had clergy involved. We had elementary and secondary principals. We had members of QP. We had indigenous and equity voices, and we also had representation from St. Louis, our adult education site. What helped to guide us was some of the feedback we received from our Spiritual Development Day, the exit survey, the synodial listening process that our late Pope Francis helped to put in place to promote greater listening and participation and inclusion. Some of the ongoing pastoral team input that we have, all of our school communities have pastoral team members listening to the signs of our time, the direction from our Universal Church, from of course Bishop Crosby, Bishop Lobzinger and our local Diocese of Hamilton. So all of these, I would say, as well as our families, the prayers of our community, I feel all helped us. And what emerged from the process was a few things. So our first pastoral theme is listen to understand. And you can see the visuals in front of you and we have here an open scripture, the word, the word of God is open. We see some of the echoing to the cross. And this, um, this theme was again connected to the synodial process, the church asking us to listen with ears of our hearts and emphasize, emphasizing empathy with the universal church. Heart-centered listening to bring about deeper awareness. And then also just listening to understand, we felt is the path to inspiration. What emerged from our conversations about this process, like it was a back and forth and brainstorming and what did we hear from our communities? The scripture verse that we landed on was, speak Lord, for your servant is listening, from Samuel. Some of the other passages that were powerful and came forward were whoever has ears, let them hear what the Spirit says from Revelation. And then from James, brothers and sisters, take note of this. Everyone should be quick to listen, slow to speak and slow to become angry. And we know sometimes it's the exact opposite of that. So those are some, some scripture verses which we kind of dug into. And, um, something that also stood out a little bit from the joy of the gospel. One of the, um, one of the works of our, of our late Pope Francis was just that idea that it is only by paying attention to whom we listen, to what we listen and how we listen, that we can grow in the art of communicating. So inspired to understand is our first pastoral theme. Our next theme that emerged was inspired to engage. And here we see some visual engagement. We see the dove, the Holy Spirit represented. It's all couched within stained glass windows each year. One is circular, one is in the form of an arch and one is rectangular. And we just, what came through with the committee was that honest listening leads to understanding and to greater engagement. And the idea that truth, goodness and beauty are accessed through divine inspiration. You know, the late Saint John Paul II encouraged us to live in history, like live in our, live in our times and share with our peers their worries and their hopes. And then in Veritatis Splendor, which is one of his famous encyclical's, I, I remember being at school and studying this, and it's called the Splendor of Truth. And it reminds us, you know, to, to understand and accept the moral truths that guide us because these truths help to form and give us the basis for true freedom, right? Those are the words of the, of Saint John Paul II. One of our schools is of course named after, after him. True freedom comes from our connection to true understanding of truths. And we felt that was important with respect to this second pastoral theme, inspired to engage. The scripture passage that stood out for us was, I am the light of the world, whoever, sorry, was, your word is a lamp for my feet, a light for my path, from Psalms. Other Bible passages were from John. I am the light of the world, whoever follows me will not walk in darkness, but will have the light of life. And I like this one from Saint John Henry Newman. God has created me to do him some definitive service, some definite service, sorry. He has committed some work to me which he has not committed to others. And then Pope Benedict, the world offers you comfort, but you are not made for comfort. You are made for greatness. And so that, um, that resonated with us as well as some supporting quotes. On the banner itself, we've captured the one image, the one passage, but we're going to use these other scripture verses and other, other things that came through to help animate these, these pastoral years as we go forward. Our final and third pastoral theme was courage to serve. And courage to serve on a couple of notes, one, World Youth Day 2027, which I no longer am eligible for, but many, many of our students certainly are and, and, and staff too, is in Seoul, Korea in 2027. And you know, that World Youth Day is centered around, take courage. I have overcome the world, from John. And we just thought that courage really stood out for us. And we felt there was an intentional progression and amplification in the pastoral plans. So if we listen in our first year more honestly, we will be inspired in our next theme to engage more authentically. This engagement finds its flesh and blood, its concreteness in Christian charity, in love and in service. And I would just say that this service to our community and to our families and to our, 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 our schools, when I think of Evangelium Vitae and the Gospel of Life, again by Saint John Paul II, really sets out our teachings and understandings around human life and how sacred it is at all stages, from conception till natural death and everything we need to do to support it and promote it. And I just think like we're in a society and in a time that we face a lot of challenges. You know, sadly, I just read about Robert Munch, who I loved his books. My kids loved his books and he's put himself forward for the made process, right? And so I think just, you know, we have to be, we have to have the courage to teach our young, our, our students that are coming to us to help them to recognize and support them in their dignity and give them the tools to face the challenges that they face. And so we feel that this third theme can help us to really dig into that. Finally, the scripture passage for courage to serve was, be courageous, be strong, do everything in love, from Corinthians. Couple of things that stood out, you can see, let all that you do be done in love. And Saint Teresa of Avila, we have three schools named after Saint Teresa, but each one of them is a different Saint Teresa. But I always have to double check when I'm asked to make sure we have, we're honoring the right saint on that day. But let nothing frighten you. Who has God lacks nothing. God alone is enough. I'm not sure if our banner is. Yeah, oh, yeah. If we could, if we could just put that up before I, um, as I kind of wrap up, I just really wanted you to, to know that a lot of process, a lot, a lot of thoughts and prayers and input went into this. These three pastoral themes will carry us through our next MYSP. And I think you just had a session around that. And so we're going to use these images, use these scripture quotes to dig into the work we're doing. These are the visuals that will go with it. We hope you feel good about them. Just wanted to bring in a couple of things tonight to, uh, amazing, thank you. It's great. So we wanted to give you a sense of what's going to be out there in our schools and about how we're going to leverage this and how we're going to grow into listening and then engaging and then serving in the, in the coming years. Have a little small prayer on the back, yeah, on this little bookmark. Just wanted to get that in front of you as well, so you could see it. I had a lovely prayer written by Paula Rush. She's a chaplain at St. David's Secondary School. She did the long version and then I asked her to do the Kohl's Notes version as well, a slightly smaller version. I could not get the big one on the prayer card. And I actually think the smaller one is actually just beautiful. I don't want to tell her to get rid of the long one, but the small one is just beautiful. And so this is kind of where we are. Wanted to share this with you. We're going to move forward and really share this out in the coming, in the coming week, weeks and, and, and month as we head towards our commissioning and our Spiritual Development Day and so on. So I shouldn't get ahead of myself. Yeah. If there's any questions, I don't know what the process is. Hi, yes.
It's from trustees.
I just wanted to say this is absolutely beautiful. You know, I, I think you've hit on a lot of great things here, you know, listening to understand, you know, listening to everyone. You know, and that's, that's a really big, important part. And I like how in the imagery, you have scripture there. So it's aligning with scripture and I think it's so beautiful, the imagery. Inspired to engage, you know, when I look at that image, I think of evangelization. And I just think, you know, spreading the world, the word out to the, not only to our community, but to the world. And I think that's absolutely stunning. And the courage to serve, like that image is so powerful, you know, washing someone's feet. It, it shows that nobody is better than anyone else, you know? We are, we are all servants of God, and I think that's unbelievable. And when I was reading the bookmark, well, there's one line that I just absolutely loved and it's something that spoke to me. You know, we desire to enter into the mist, into this mystery, to root ourselves firmly in your will. And that is important, you know, following God's will and surrendering to God's will. And, and that's where we're going to find happiness, you know, within ourselves and within the board. So, you know, well done. I think you've done a great job.
Well, amen. And like, you know, your will be done, not mine. And it's often, you know, we think of my will be done and we're reminding us and Paula was reminding us and that prayer is that it's God's will. And where is that going to take us through this pastoral thing? We don't exactly know. We, we hope it, you know, we have some ideas, but you're right, we don't know. And thank you for that very much. The, the washing the feet, we thought it was, we thought that was really important. And when, when we look at it, we, we of course think of Christ washing his disciples' feet. But what we also like about it is we don't have the face of Jesus. We intentionally, we don't have it so that we want people to be able to see themselves as well, either as doing that foot washing or as maybe receiving that as well. So we, um, mostly doing it, but we wanted to, to, to have that in there as well. So thank you. mostly doing it, but we wanted to uh, to, to have that in there as well. So thank you.
I commend you for that. And I think this is wonderful. I'm excited to implement this in our system.
Uh, trustee Dorey Masters.
Again, John, it's, it is very beautiful uh, laid out. I was just wondering what supports are available for staff uh, to implement this beyond, I know every school will get one of the banners and so on. Um, but I'm just wondering what supports are there? And um, how it connects with blessed and beloved um, and any, the religion program.
Yeah, great question. I have like a fuller, bit of a fuller board report I would like to come back to share with respect to all of these programs that we are implementing and some of the connections. But certainly, I, I would say that we have developed some, I don't want to, some tools and some items to share across our system that, for example, we have um, still for this year, we've created a Jubilee, um, celebrating the Jubilee, the pilgrimage, but connecting it to our themes. And it's also, it's almost like a, it's like a whole playday activity that schools can implement in the building, in the courtyard, on the field, and it's gonna take them through various stations around listening. Like, so for example, for this theme, it's around listening to the story of the saint that their school is named after, listening around some of our um, um, traditional ways of praying, but also some of our maybe less traditional um, visio divina or electio divina, as well as some games and activities. So we've tried to make it there to be multiple stations for multiple ages. And so we have these um, some of these things are created um, Google documents and items and, and I'm happy to share them, of course, with us. We're distributing those out and um, that, like, that's one example. And certainly with respect to the blessed and beloved, that is being implemented in all of our elementary schools. We're currently, I've just been doing end tip presentations to our new teachers. And boy, we have a lot of new teachers to present to. Um, but uh, to help them to understand how important this tool is and how they need to listen to what the church is saying, to what our families are saying with respect to teaching family life and how, how important it is and how nice it is that the new program has, it's, it's, it's been updated. And the language around families is a been updated. And kids come to it saying, you know, the most important family is the one you're coming from. And so we're kind of recognizing that and then we're building on that. So we're certainly listening to what our stakeholders have asked us to do. If that makes sense. Yep.
Well,
you, through you Chair, thank you very much um, for the presentation. And um, just echoing trustee comments around um, the three themes and the visuals. They are very beautiful and uh, um, I was excited to see the launch of the pastoral plan. I know we'd, we'd heard whispers of it, but we, we were waiting to really um, see it uh, in, in practice. And so um, I, I like it even more because of the culmination of all the different um, voices in our community that you went through in terms of the three month process uh, last year in order to come to this evolution. So thank you for that. Um, two comments, I guess. Uh, number one, I'm, I'm curious about how we will sort of bring this into the more fuller community from our broad board meeting to really kind of celebrate um, where we're headed. And then number two, um, in previous years, each year, we've sort of focused on one theme to really um, you know, spend time um, discussing the theme, learning about the theme, having discussion and conversation. I just wondered if that would be, second question is that, that will be the same approach this year?
So, my hope is that it will be. Um, and it would be wonderful to start with the theme, listen to understand, especially as we feel it kind of amplifies in each theme unto this, until serving. So listening, leading to engagement, engagement, leading to service in the community or in our, in our communities. So I think yes, we would like to roll that out. Wanted to, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves because we needed to bring it to forward to this group to, to, to get your feedback and hear what you have to say, for sure. That's important. And then um, sorry, um, Tracy, the first question was, um, how would we then?
Around bringing this to the community at large. Obviously, we've consulted with a lot of groups in the evolution of this. So I, I guess bringing it out both to, not just uh, I guess leaning on um, trustee Dorey Masters on staff, but then
Yeah.
sort of students, families, community at large who invested into the um, process.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And I think one of our next steps will be with our pastoral teams in our secondary and elementary schools. We're planning a pastoral team launch because by getting them on board and by um, breaking it down with them, what primary activities we have, um, junior, intermediate, secondary, we want to have different um, pieces of it for our pastoral team members to take back to their communities and for them to engage in, in their schools. It would be wonderful when we get to our commissioning event in November, if we could have a real deep, rich kind of celebration around this for um, those who, who are, who are present then. We'd certainly like to share some of the imagery around our Spiritual Development Day on Friday with, with everybody's a thumbs up on that, at least have some visuals. But um, certainly pastoral teams, um, certainly our parish partners at our deanery meeting. We anticipate sharing that at our next deanery meeting. As well. So deanery, parishes, and um, we're in some conversations around maybe doing something, we need to do something with our families to get this out to them as well. And um, how can we engage them in some listening activities or evenings? So.
Go ahead, Paul.
Madam Chair, Tracy, I would add to that, that we're going to leverage our, the opportunity we have at the commissioning evening when after the commissioning ceremony and the social is done, we've asked our CSAC chairs and co-chairs to stay for our onboarding session and we will be presenting this to them there. So we're hoping to leverage that um, with them to bring back to their school communities to get that momentum moving as well. So between the deanery and the work that we do with our pastoral team leads and our CSAC chairs, we're hoping to, to gain some momentum and, and get it out into school communities.
Um, trustee Stanley.
Go ahead first. I'll, I'll go, I'll go last. It's fine.
I just wanted to add a comment. I, you're doing a fabulous job. So I, I know, and there's no criticism here. I'm just wondering um, as a passing comment, if it's worth reaching out to the youth groups uh, that are at some of the churches. Uh, now some churches have more, have stronger youth groups than others, but there is some amazing work that they're doing to bring, uh, to bring faith at home and build that relationship between home, school and church. And I'm wondering if that's something that can, that we can build upon to, to help in your efforts with uh, strengthening that relationship. Um, I definitely think it's worthwhile and uh, I just wanted to bring that up to you.
Uh, thank you. And that, that's so important. And the work we did last year with respect to all of our, the clergy from our deanery and all of our principals about taking that step forward and talking, you know, sitting down and talking about what is going well, where do we need more effort? This is one thing which we could do to maybe bring us back to the table around that. I appreciate that. And we have some of our chaplains like Sarah Kay, she's at Monsignor Doyle, and she's been very involved with her, with parish ministry as well. And this is something that she could help us lean into. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, John, can you go back to the, one of the first slides that said, I think the word guide was, these are guiding?
Sure.
Yeah. It's our prayer. So. Um, uh, pretty far. Wait, there it is. What guided the work? Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Does anyone see anything missing here? Hmm? Um, there's nothing about trustees. Okay? And first I wanted to say, I think you've done some fantastic work here. And it says nothing about the work that you've completed. I like these three goals. I think they're better than our previous one. Um, but the truth is, and the public needs to know this, this is the first that we've seen of this. The trustees were not consulted in any way in this entire process. And here it is, it's already done and presented to us to be rubber stamped. Um, this is the same problem with the Holy Rosary, bounty review writ large to the whole board. And it's not about you, John, because I remember when I first got on the board, you said, "I can't wait, uh, trustee Stanley, to have you and the other trustees work with me to make our next pastoral plan." But somewhere along the line, through a board level failure of decision-making, obviously you weren't given the opportunity to engage with us, consult with us, uh, dialogue with us about how to create this. So i- we have to have this discussion about the, the governance failures that are happening at the board because they're very serious. And let me explain why this is particularly serious. So the Minister of Education has articulated a new vision for Catholic school trustees focused on denominational rights and religious. And yet we have our pastoral plan, which is effectively our multi-year strategic plan for faith that hasn't had any engagement with the trustees. And again, we're supposed to engage in high-level strategic decision-making, not operational. But if this isn't high-level strategic, this is, this is as high level as it gets. It's a multi-year strategic plan, but it's already been completed and shown to us afterwards. So I don't think that's acceptable going forward. Okay? Um, and again, there was a previous director who might bear a lot of the responsibility for this, but that's enough of that. So putting all that aside, but it had to be said and it has to be noted, I think. Um, I, I like what, what, what's here so far. I have to think a lot about it. When Josh um, regarding our MYSP, he suggested that we need to have actionable goals. So we've got some, some very nice sounding stuff here. Uh, but is it more fluff than substance? Do we have, do we have an actual um, policy that we want to have uh, surveys, for example? Do we want to have survey results show that uh, our students after two years of this plan are reading their Bible once a week now? Something that we can measure that's tangible with an, with a goal that we can achieve and measure that result. Otherwise, it's not really a, a plan that we can hold, that we can monitor like we do for the rest of our plans. It's just a fluffy airy thing. It sounds really nice. So it would be good if we could have that. Maybe you do have that and you haven't had a chance to get into that.
Well, I would just jump in and say like, I do, I do feel it's a little dismissive to say it's fluffy and airy when I've had twenty plus people meet with me three times for multiple times after school and in the evening to talk about what is our Catholic community and parents and partners and clergy asking for. I feel I have been receptive as well to hearing and reading the minutes of our meetings, of our gatherings with our trustees and families to have a sense of the direction and have a sense of the ask you might have had. This has not been oblivious to any of that. And while we did not sit down and go through it point by point, certainly the spirit of this committee has been infused and heard, I would say, to some, to some significant extent. And we've tried to reflect that, that this is something um, rooted in, in our scripture, in our church, in our faith. It is not by any means airy-fairy. I have many things which we could talk about and go forward with. But I also have fifteen minutes on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Well, I just want to encourage you. And it's only because I believe so much in this and you know that. And I believe that you're the right man to do that. Okay? So I'm not questioning your skill, your ability and your dedication and your willingness to listen.
Right. Getting out of order.
I just, uh,
You've asked your question. He's answered it. Thank you.
If you don't mind, uh, John, if I just add one point, just, just to, to address the um, and um, the, the comment around the goals uh, for the plan. So if you recall from our previous multi-year strategic plan, there was uh, the indicators number ten through eighteen that were specific to our uh, faith and our multi, they were linked in with our multi, or our multi-year pastoral plan at that time. So that would be the goal as we create the indicators on the current multi-year strategic plan, that we would include goals that would be support of our faith. Um, we included goals last time around sacramental response, around um, parish, uh, parish home collaboration and, and family collaboration. Um, all of the, there was, there was nine of them actually. So we have included them uh, on there. And um, so I just wanted to reassure you that there will be, there will be measurable outcomes that come along with the plan. Um, but just also to John's point too, that there was many, many months of collaboration on the, on the plan uh, response. So I um, I know that there was a lot of heart and soul. I had a lot of conversations with um, with John and also with uh, Deacon Olson um, just around even write down drilling into the meaning and the conversations that I'd had with clergy and, and the committee. So I'm just rest assured that there was a lot of uh, collaboration around that. And I, and your point is noted. Okay? Thank you.
I'm heartened to hear that. Thank you very much. And if, if I could hear more of that, I would not have these concerns. And it's only because they've been built up that I've had to express them this way. I'm sorry.
Please, be family. That's enough. Please. Thank you.
Certainly, there's nothing intentional uh, when we plan this around leaving anybody out. I, I would be the last person to do that and I feel remiss that I'm hearing that. We certainly tried to gather everybody in to the best of our abilities. And going forward, that's just another thing for me to be more conscious of.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Garen?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm not just beating or, or one way or the other, anything that uh, like my colleague has said, but on terms of what it was actually chosen, I would concur that I'm very happy with the, the work that has happened. I'm, I'm finding the uh, graphics and the, the statements themselves um, quite inspirational. I think um, maybe even not necessarily inadvertently, but when I think about sort of the, the polarizing times that we're in right now, if, if we can teach ourselves and our students like the listening and then ultimately doing things to serve gets away from um, sort of being in battle zone. So I, I really applaud that. And I, and I applaud your graphic artist that uh, on each of the images, there's a little piece that's breaking out. And I, I really like that. So, but uh, like you can even see it on the, the, particularly on the serve that is sort of breaking out, like thinking outside the box or breaking outside the box. So I really enjoy that.
He'll be happy to hear that after we sent it back twenty times. So we got what we wanted. So thank you very much.
Through you Chair, um, just listening to some of the comments. Um, John, I wanted to uh, share that in our previous um, pastoral meetings, when we talked about the opportunity for our retreat this year, um, one of the things that we did think would be a great idea is if we can lean on you to perhaps um, help us facilitate spending some time, dialogue and discussion through the new themes. Um, so we, you know, more to come, but we did want to try and see wanting to kind of spend time discussing, learning, dialoguing, having conversation. Um, and trustee Garen, who's the Chair of our Pastoral Committee, I know was going to look into that. So um, stay tuned because I, I do think we want to spend more time with you.
That's wonderful. And as I conclude, um, we have connected to the Diocese of Hamilton Bridget Kerr, who runs the Bishop Farrell Library at the Diocese of Hamilton, has, has created uh, using, using the Bible, using scripture. We've taken some images from the Saint John's Bible, which is handwritten and it's incredible. You've probably seen it. And they're, they've, um, we have presentations for our students and work we're doing with all of our students on retreat at Mount Mary with scripture connected to listening to understand and imagery. So we can certainly bring some of those to a possible retreat experience as well for adults.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I, I thought it was really great visual and, and plan that you've described. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to student achievement plan.
Good evening, everyone. Through you Chair, I'd like to quickly introduce, um, beside me here, we have Ryan Lewis, our data architect. You've met him before. And Courtney Brewer, who is um, our And Courtney Brewer, who is our research coordinator. She is here while Kelly is seconded off. So like to welcome them both here. A lot of work has gone into our SAP through some of the, mainly through the research group and the planning and programming through the program services group. So we've been working together on that. So we're very excited to share a piece of what was within the report. You will have read the whole report, of course, and noted that the SAP within there for the board is not something that is due until April. So what you see there now is what you see. We're hopeful that the ministry will continue with through the same vein as what we have there currently with the data and the indicators. I feel pretty confident that they will. So that's good news for all of us here, especially for those in the research department that have to do all that behind the scenes work. So what I thought for tonight we would do is focus on these school saps. This is new and improved and we're really, really excited. We have done a lot of work on this and I wanted to just focus on this as something exciting that is not mandated by the ministry. It is not across other boards. It is something that we've developed internally that we're really proud of. We used to have, as you would recall, we used to have our BIPSA and our SIPSA. We would have our Board Improvement Plan. We would have our School Improvement Plan. When the SAP came through in 2023 through the Better Schools Act, there was no link to the school saps. It was strictly board level as it continues to be. So we've been working hard to develop something internally that we can measure, that data will be fed into centrally. So we've managed to pull that off and Ryan is the fellow that's done most of that work. So kudos to him. I will, oh, this is my mouse. I can't use that. Okay. You'll see here, this was the school SAP committee and research team worked collaboratively. We did pull together a committee. I wanted to ensure that we had voices from the administrators. They would be doing the work. They would need to know their data and we're really pushing them over the last three years to know their data, to know their students in their schools who are not meeting standards because that's important information for us to know as administrators. And finding that information out from their educators is something that we need to put a little bit of press on. So we've been doing that. These folks stepped forward here to be part of our committee. So we worked together last year. We had a template from the previous year, but we really wanted that data to be pulled up through individual schools and implemented to make it to make it easier because it was difficult to go to different places to gather data. So we have the dashboard completed now. There's no data hunting. It's all there. It's pre-populated SAP for the schools. One page, zero tabs, color coordinated to match the ministry and the Waterloo priorities. Easy to use with dropdown options. What I'm going to show you is a few screenshots of the work that we've done. So you can just get a little visual. We did this based on feedback from the administrators to try and to make it user-friendly so they would go into it. Now, we do at times throughout the year have more of accountability for them to go into it because superintendents come and visit the schools three times a year and we do ask pointed questions where we're gathering data from them on the students in need in their schools based on what their school data is saying. So we did, these school saps were developed using the feedback saying, what, what do you need? So we will develop that you will use it because that's what we want. So here you will see the SAP priorities and I want to say our proudest moment right now is the bottom one, the faith in action. So as we're talking about measurable data in all areas, including faith, we have pulled in a really nice opportunity to gather data across the system in both elementary and secondary that is measurable and ongoing. So there's our two indicators, indicator 12 and 13 we added. And in elementary, we're asking the percent of students participating in sacraments for first communion and confirmation. And we're able to do that. That is collected in Aspen. So we can pull that data fairly rapidly. The indicator 13 is in secondary, the percentage of students who experienced the OCSGEs at school are Catholic graduate expectations and also the percentage of students who meet or exceed a provincial standard in religion. So we can pull that data pretty easily. I say we, I mean, Ryan. So we're, we're pretty proud of that work. It is and you know, we'll have to say there's a few people across the province that are pretty interested in the work that we're doing right now, reaching out and wanting us to do a little bit of a show and tell with them. So we're also excited by that. We're housing it in Power BI. There's a dashboard. You can see what that looks like. Some of the collections, this one particularly is oh, OSSLT data. So the priority is there, the goal and the SAP. So the percent of first-time eligible students who are successful in the OSSLT. So you can see the data there. We're putting board in school so they can keep track. We're also having three years of collected data on the SAP dashboard. So schools can have at a glance, see where they are over the past three years, which is particularly helpful when you have new administrators coming into buildings. It's at a glance for them to see what's what's been happening and maybe some of the areas that they want to focus on. There is the SAP in Power BI. So this is the screen that the administrator would see to get in there and start their work. All the SAP indicators, of course, are on the left-hand side. And that's the one pager there. So those are the indicators. It looks big and it looks like a lot, but the feedback was they wanted, they wanted a one-pager. So they did not want any other pages or dropdown along the bottom, those little tabs. They didn't want the tabs. So we tried to respond to that as well. Again, pre-populated by research. We want that consistency for future years. We don't want them having different locations and gathering of data that's kind of all over the place. It's always in there. It's streamlined wherever possible and the dropdowns, they can add specific detail. That was one part that we felt for some new to admin people, it might be helpful for them to have that honed in, the dropdown menus for them to select from with other columns where they can add information of their own for monitoring. So there's another kind of a little view of the historical data that would be pre-populated. And then the opportunities for improvement up to three, you can see those dropdown. And I think the next slide, I don't know. That's the closest one that we have, but you can see the little arrows that we offer the dropdown that they would put in their actions that we collectively gathered from consultants, feedback about what they would believe, the actions. So we'll take math and literacy because I know those people well. They would have offered some feedback on what schools may look at for putting in there around those actions that they could be selecting such as board support, data that they would get through their Lexia, through their Arcadian screeners. So just some different data areas that they would, would gather. There is the screen with the needs assessment. So you can see the dropdown for different, we have MLL, IEPs, the strand and scale data for, this is grade three and six, reading and writing that we would gather. Lots of that information data would come from our EQAO, report card scores and other areas within the, with data that they had gathered throughout the work that's being done in the school. And there's the actions and monitors. You can see that. And then we've included an implementation stage for dropdown. We have four areas of selection for where they believe they are in that stage because they could have been focusing on that within their SAP for a longer period of time, or maybe it's a new initiative and they're just beginning those at that stage. Okay. Is there anything that you wanted to add, Ryan, that I maybe missed or Courtney?
Maybe just the only thing to early outline, as you mentioned, that yellow section is WCDSP created. The other three sections were ministry mandated. So we added that ourselves.
Yeah. So it's pretty, it's pretty unique and special to us. So we're like that. We're so proud of that work. Like it took a long time for us to get there. We had an iteration of it last year, but it wasn't feeling like the monitoring piece was not as consistent or friendly. So we really landed on a really solid one. So we're really, really proud of that. Anything else?
I'm new to the role, but I come from the classroom and I'm very excited about this because it's very actionable. So I've tested it out with my teacher lens and checks all the boxes that I need. So it's great. About that.
Thanks, Courtney. We're leaning into Courtney for all those like classroom things. We're asking all these questions. Would this work? Would this work? What should we do here? So we're, we have a double-edged positive feelings coming air from Courtney. That's great. All right. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Trustee Sikora?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just maybe a little bit detailed, but I've noticed you're trying to track like the percent of students going through their sacraments. Are you? I had a delayed confirmation, by the way, when I was younger. So I guess are you tracking somebody, you know, who's not doing it on schedule, for example, or for example, through CAC? You know, that's happening often, maybe not as visible to the system. Are we, are we tracking that?
We are tracking it through, and I don't know if sacramental prep, I don't know if Paul Madonna knows anything about this or Ryan maybe has had some conversation around it too. I may lean into you, but we are pulling it from Aspen, which the administrators do need to input when they are aware of it. Is there any other context point? I'm not sure.
We do have data on sacramental programming and participation in grade two and grade seven. We didn't pull it the way that, you know, you would do it efficiently. We had to do it more old school last year, but we do have a process in place moving forward where we will be able to track that now and it will be part of an electronic scanning. So we were actually pleasantly surprised with, I can't quote exact numbers, but I can get them for you. We were really, really surprised with how many of our students are taking part in sacramental programming in both grade two and grade seven.
Just sorry, just to add, sorry, Madam Chair, just through, just to maybe add a little bit of additional information to your question, trustee Sikora, just around the dashboard that had collected that information. So as was mentioned, it's updated through Aspen and it's the regular update. We update the dashboard monthly, but however, not every indicator is updated monthly, but when it does. So to answer your question, if they do it out of turn, it will at some point, so suppose they don't do it with their class or at that same time, if they do it the following year, it will, it will update that information when we do the update. So depending on when it's entered, it will, it'll be captured.
Are there any other questions for trustees? Trustee Weller?
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation and I can see all of your excitement on the work. I know the last year's version wasn't where you wanted it to be after the rollout of the new board plan. So congratulations on getting that done. Couple of questions. As this gets used this year by principals and teachers, can you tell me if there is room for sort of that consultative or feedback phase as we roll it out in this format this year? And then second of all, you know, the blink and think format of it will be a lot easier for principals and teachers to see who needs help in their school or who maybe needs additional challenges, et cetera. So can you tell me some of the feedback from sort of the teachers that have been exposed to it in terms of how it helps them?
Okay, we will, we haven't had teacher feedback directly on this yet, but the sit teams, so the school improvement teams, every school has one. And they are, we're working with the principals on this on October 15th that are admin meeting. The research team will be there and some program support staff wandering around, making sure that they can get into their dashboards. Because we wanted to kind of do it through a supportive lens. So the administrators feel like they, they can manage it when they leave here. So we'll be doing that on the 15th with them and then they will take that back to their schools. And their sit team within their building will be the teachers that will then offer the feedback when they look at their indicators and identify where they want to focus on in their schools. So that would typically be the process. And then superintendents, we are heading there to the schools the last two weeks of September. And the expectation is, and they, they're receiving those questions next week, actually. So they have lots of time to prepare, but they will be sharing their completed saps with us at that time, all superintendents in all of our schools the last two weeks of November. You're welcome.
Through you, Madam Chair. This is a very humble group because I am very modest. They are leading this work. I would say provincially, we do get a lot of acknowledgement around this school improvement plan. And this is particularly with the new pillar, faith in action, that the last pillar that has been added. We have had many inquiries from many boards asking about that work and wanting us to share that work and bring it to conferences and whatnot. So just want to congratulate this team for that tremendous amount of work that's gone into that. And I know Superintendent Eby has also participated in that work with his secondary lens. So thank you.
I just wanted to say that all we need to do here to bring these two presentations together is link this stuff, this excellent work into actionable stuff for our pastoral plan with some goals like layout, what are we trying to achieve and is the data supporting it? If we do that, we're 90% of the way there. Okay?
Any other questions or comments? Okay, trustee Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Now, I'm not sure if this was something that was part of the student achievement plan or not, but I wanted to bring it up as a comment. I heard in the, in the media that they were bringing back exams for some of the other grades in high school. I think that's excellent. I think that definitely contributes to student achievement because it helps them prepare for real world experiences. It's definitely not easy. We're always tested and I think that's wonderful. And I think that definitely kind of complements the work that you're doing for student achievement. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions from trustees. Thank you very much. Moving on, we will actually move into our linkages and pastoral. And at this time, we could say goodbye to the superintendents and guests. Thank you.
I'm going to call this meeting back to order here. As we are past nine o'clock, I need to I need to have a motion to extend past nine, past the three hour mark. Could I get a motion for that? Trustee Wyler seconded trustee Sakura. Okay, you have consensus. Okay, thank you very much. So the OCSTA, CCSTA communications, the link was provided there. Oh, yes, thank you. I totally, I totally skipped over 6.1 and 6.2. It's getting late, you know? Okay, um, yes, let's go for linkages if you're ready or pastoral, whoever's ready. Thank you.
Our meeting was much more abbreviated than the linkages meeting, so we're very curious what was going on in the room. But so pastoral care, we, we have put an invitation out to each of the clergy at every church in Waterloo region. We've heard back from our positive responses from three clergy so far, and some people are not available, and then there's some plans to sort of reengage and re-ask other ones we haven't heard back from. Specifically, at the next meeting, so the October 27th board meeting, Deacon Sean Meaney from St. Anthony Daniel and Kitchener will be here to do the opening prayer. We're going to invite him also to join us for the dinner beforehand, so I'd like to encourage all trustees, if at all possible, to come as early as possible for that, the meal portion, since we're inviting him to join. If it happened, if you're able to do it, please, please come. We're also looking at on November 10th, the next committee of the whole, if the group is in agreement that we would like to actually embed a mini spiritual retreat into that evening, since everyone is, is here, and would invite spiritual animator Richard Olson, as well as perhaps even inviting John Murphy to attend and have more discussion around pastoral care, and then just a time for us to have some time together. So if there's any objections to that, please get in touch with me, but that's, that is the working plan right now.
That's November 7th. Oh, 10th. Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, now moving to OCSTA, CCSTA communications, so the link has been provided there, and I'm going to move now to the 8.2 trustee work plan, so the annual work plan. And I'm going to turn this over to trustee Wyler to give a little bit of a preamble on this. We had this as part of our, part of our plan that we did initially when we became trustees, but the last few years we haven't done it. And so, and there is an expectation around reporting on that. So I'll just turn it over to trustee Wyler to give some further comments.
Yeah, thank you through you chair. So in the past couple of years, we've certainly done this more informally, but as we continue to learn together, in our policy 2003, our board job description, it talks about the fact that the priorities of us as a board will be set in September, which is much like we do with our work plan, if you will, for the year. It says with progress of the work of the board reviewed in January, and then a report prepared and brought to the June board meeting of each school year. So what's contained within that? We have been doing very well, the work of the board, September, October through March, that we review each month, the feast days, the events, the policies coming up as our governance. In addition to that, we added this year, some of our draft priorities, which are kind of a working document, so that if in the committee of the whole, we see that we'd like to add more, say we want education on a particular area, or if we would like to have a discussion on a particular area, these are all elements to add. So what I have done is started off with the priority, which is essentially governance, education, advocacy, community outreach, and policy review. So those are the four priorities, and I've added points as a starting point, so that as we continue to bring in priorities for our work at committees to the whole, we can add to this. And then by the time we get to January, we can have a fulsome report of the work that we've done, and then again, the final report in June as per our board policy. And so I just wanted to provide this on, on, on a document, and then I think that as we continue to do stuff over the committee of the whole, we add to it, and then it sort of becomes a report when we report back to the community. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there any, have trustees reviewed this, and is there any comments or feedback on, on what's been outlined in your, in your information? Do you Sakura?
Um, I guess just if we feel something needs to be added, how do you propose we do it? Wait till the next committee of the whole?
Any other comments or? Would you like people to send feedback by a certain date? Maybe, maybe by the next, before the next committee of the whole?
Through you chair, maybe I'll send out a request for feedback as we start preparing -- Through you chair, maybe I'll send out a request for feedback as we start preparing for the next committee of the whole. And then, I mean, people are welcome to send it at any time, but, and then I can do a formal request just so that we make sure we get it as up to date as possible by the time that we get to the committee of the whole.
Sounds good. Okay. So you can see the October work plan outlined in front of you, quite a busy October. Not going to read through all the events, but you can see it there for your information. So with that, I'm going to move to 13.1. So again, that's just upcoming meetings. There's a list there in your package for you to review. And then item 14.1, Board of Trustees meeting coming up on October 27th. And there's a list of reports and various things that'll be covered in that meeting as well. So moving then to 15.1, confirmed decisions made tonight.
It was moved by trustee Sakura and seconded by trustee Wyler that the agenda for Monday, October 6, 2025 be now approved, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Garin and seconded by trustee Stanley that the consent agenda, Board of Trustees, and the recommendations contained therein be now approved, carried by consensus. It was moved by trustee Wyler and seconded by trustee Sakura that the meeting be extended past 9:00 PM, carried by consensus.
Okay, thank you. Moving then to our closing prayer. O risen Lord, you've entrusted us with the responsibility to help form a new generation of disciples and apostles through the gift of our Catholic schools. As disciples of Christ, may we educate and nurture hope in all learners to realize their full potential to transform God's world. May our Catholic schools truly be at the heart of the community, fostering success for each by providing a place for all. May we and all whom we lead be discerning believers formed in the Catholic faith community, effective communicators, reflective and creative thinkers, self-directed, responsible lifelong learners, collaborative contributors, caring family members, and responsible citizens. Grant us the wisdom of your Spirit so that we might always be faithful to our responsibilities. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. Okay, and now I need a motion to adjourn. Can I have one? Trustee Francis and trustee Wyler. Okay, do we have consensus? Okay, thank you very much.